Next thing on our agenda is the public comment period. It's a 60-minute time limit. We've got a lot of people in here. I doubt very seriously if we'll be able to get everybody being able to talk. We'll do the best that we can. We're going to limit the talking to a three-minute timeframe. And from there, we'll just... It's not intended for any questions directly to the board. It is your opportunity to say anything you want about anything you want. Mrs. Shirocky, has anyone signed up?
You know, there have been a few, Mr. Chairman. Miles Atkins.
Could we get a name and address, please, Miles?
Hello. Miles Atkins, 303 Blue Ridge here in Front Royal. So I know what everybody's going to be kind of heated about is statue stuff tonight. I got to tell you, I don't believe in second-place trophies. First off, you know, you lost the war, get over it. Second, though, it's not really what that's about nowadays. It's kind of polarizing what everything is and the situation with the country nowadays. My view on this is it's not about the North or South. It's not about anything like that. What it is, is it's submission. It's people submitting to the will and local jurisdictions submitting to the will of the far-left and everybody else. And I, as an American, as a veteran, will not be submitting. I don't believe in that, and I don't think we should as a community. I yield the rest of my time.[127.40][127.40][applause]
Please, could we have no applause or any comment from the gallery, if at all possible? I understand it's a very heated discussion and arguments both ways, but just please be respectful of everybody that's trying to talk. Thank you. Mrs. Shirocky, has anyone else signed up?
Gary Kushner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Gary Kushner, 1106 Fitchett Road. There are two elements to consider regarding the memorial on the courthouse lawn: the physical structure and its location. The statue sat quietly and majestically for over 100 years without controversy until Mr. Floyd was killed at the hands of law enforcement recently, and members of a cancel culture made it an issue. There's no public evidence that race was a factor in Mr. Floyd's killing, but there had been other recent controversial killings of black citizens at the hands of law enforcement, and suddenly the statue took on the interpretation of oppression, slavery, and social justice by some. The structure does not display the Confederate flag or other specific advocacy of the Confederacy. It just contains the names of the local citizens injured and killed in the Civil War. It is an acknowledgement of the character, loyalty, and sacrifice of local men who supported this sovereignty of state rights over submission to the federal government. The soldier atop is a symbol of the likeness of each patriot listed and does not represent the Confederacy, in my opinion. It is highly unlikely that any of the persons listed on the monument were actually slaveholders. Each person has the right to view any inanimate object as he/she chooses, and it's regrettable that some view it in a negative fashion, but the statue has no intrinsic oppressive message. As for its location, it is fitting that it sits adjacent to other war memorials on the courthouse lawn in the center of our town in front of a building that itself is a symbol for equal protection under the law and equality of treatment for all regardless of their skin color or community stature. A non-binding referendum has been scheduled to assess the public's opinion on the statue's future, and it would be appropriate for our elected representatives to respect the will of the majority once it's known. The referendum is a fitting determinant in our democratic society. Should the majority of citizens vote to leave the monument unchanged, maybe the addition of a plaque could be considered, identifying that the structure is not meant to oppress anyone, in hopes that it ceases to be an element of divisiveness in our community, regardless that there are some who might choose to interpret it that way. While there are assuredly speakers tonight with perspectives different than mine, I ask that you focus specifically on the opinions from actual citizens of Warren County. Thank you for listening.[324.06][324.06][applause]
Again, please keep your applause, your voices, to a very, very minimal. We really don't want to hear it. We have lots of people that need to talk. Mrs. Shirocky, has anyone else signed up?
Paul Gabbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Paul Gabbert, 1221 Valley View Drive. I just have a couple of things. The first is on the statue, which I would like to see stay in place. It's been there for years and years, and nothing was ever said until the latest George Floyd issue. But let me say this: I'll accept the voter's decision. If it is unanimous on relocation, I'll accept that. And I'll accept it without hostility, marches, vandalism, destruction, or violence. And I challenge the other side, who want it moved, to say the same thing, if it stays where it's at. So there's a challenge to "Front Royal Unites." The bigger issue for me is closing the bridge to celebrate the birthday of George Floyd. By doing this, the town and county have paved the way to future bridge closings for anyone's How are you going to say no if this is how I want to celebrate my birthday? Freedom of speech. What about when someone wants to close it to celebrate Robert E. Lee's birthday? Freedom of speech. What about wanting to close the bridge down to celebrate George Floyd's first drug conviction? Or his conviction on breaking in a house and beating a pregnant woman? Also, free speech. I am also getting very tired of hearing the terms "white privilege" and "white supremacy." When I was 15, I worked a summer, a summer, as a bricklayers helper alongside two black men. Was I considered white privilege for getting that job? I don't think so. "Front Royal Unites" is now blocking people... Excuse me. All this leads me to say that "Front Royal Unites" isn't for uniting black and white people. They are doing... They are for dividing and doing an excellent job at it. "Front Royal Unites" is now blocking people from their group site who gave them their money and their support. A Facebook... A post on Facebook by the leader of "Front Royal Unite" wrote about a person who was extremely committed to "Front Royal Unites," who gave their money, their time, their allegiance to the group. His comment on Facebook was, "I blocked her from the group because she is a white woman who tried to say she was part-black." Let me repeat that: "Because she is white."
Paul, your time is up. Thank you.
One more?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. I think I said enough.[562.95][562.95][applause]
Mrs. Shirocky, has anyone else signed up?
Craig Anderson.
Hey, good evening. This is Craig Anderson, 110 Sunset Lane, Linden, Virginia. Been here since '84. Mainly, I want to say that I'm relieved that you all did a really good job about not going all Gestapo on us with the COVID thing. I saw a lady the other day in Walmart, had her mask on, you know, her obedience training. She was going along really good with her mask. She yanked it down, licked her fingers to open the bag. You know, we know that this thing is all political. The CDC told us that, what was it, we don't have 200,000 deaths from COVID. It's really 10,000. The others are related to obesity and whatever. It's just a political fear thing. You all could have went all Gestapo on us, but our Commonwealth attorney, he's not cracking the whip. Health Department's not cracking the whip. We're all more or less using kind of some common sense here with it, and I sure appreciate Thank you all.[655.54][655.54][applause]
Mrs. Shirocky, has anyone else signed up?
Richard Hoover.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Richard Hoover, 419 Liberty Hall Road, Front Royal, Virginia. The American Civil War was the central event of generations of Warren County residents. There were Front Royal-related reminiscences of all types. Many of these reminiscences were exhilarating and victorious, built around such figures as Bell Boyd and her servant and companion, Eliza Corsi, Stonewall Jackson, and the rest. Other Front Royal reminiscences were built around the terrible realities of that war. I think especially of our own Lucy Buck, the young woman of Bel-Air, who kept one of the most compelling of wartime journals. The economic analysis of a retired U.S. Army historian tells us that Front Royal and Warren County did not recover from this war until the 1950s. Somehow, our nation survived this four-year horror and was launched into an aftermath of reconciliation, of new and intense patriotic feeling. Growing up in Cleveland, I was raised to view both sides as equally American. I was proud to have a Confederate forebearer and would have been just as proud had I had one who had fought for the Union. And so we come to our courthouse lawn monument commemorating 600 Warren County veterans who fought for the Confederacy, many of them with the letter K after their names, standing for "killed in action." This monument is no less than a testimony to what Warren County went through, to the bravery, self-sacrifice, and selflessness of its sons, their families, and of all the others who loved and supported them. Remove it from where it was originally placed, placed by many who remembered well, 1861 to 65. Remove it to some rarely-visited location, and you not only degrade the monument and the men and citizens for whom it stands, but you remove every day that which tells part of the Warren County story to passing residents and tourists alike. For the sake of history, of reconciliation, of knowing the complexities of who we were, who we are, and of where we live, I ask that you let it alone. To paraphrase a park historian of the Gettysburg battlefield who feels that many of her monuments are endangered, monuments which commemorate a complex past should remain untouched. Slavery itself was a complex institution, both as it was lived and in terms of who we are today as citizens of Warren County. I wish there were also a monument on the courthouse lawn to those African-Americans who, for almost two centuries...
Mr. Hoover, I hate to interrupt you, but we've got a three-minute limit.
I understand, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.[880.63][880.63][applause]
Mrs. Shirocky, has anyone else signed up?
Kristen Iden.
Good evening. Kristen Iden, 407 Washington Avenue. Fact: The outcome of a non-binding referendum ballot question symbolically makes heard the general opinion of the voting population. It is up to the board to provide leadership on the proposed relocation of the Confederate monument. Fact: The board said that they were going to offer a forum where all citizens could learn about the history of the monument and discuss it. The board never followed through with this. Fact: In the absence of a forum, "Front Royal Unites" held one on October 18th. The board was invited. Chairman Mabe said he would attend. No one from the board attended. Fact: The southern states succeeded over the issue of slavery, not states' rights. Fact: The architects of the lost cause narrative acted from various motives. They sought to romanticize their actions and whitewash historical fact. Fact: The majority of Confederate monuments were erected between the 1890s and the 1950s during the Jim Crow era of segregation and the enactment of laws to disenfranchise black citizens. James Grossman, executive director of the American Historical Association, says that the increase in statues and monuments were clearly meant to send a message. Quote, "These statues were meant to create legitimate garb for white supremacy." Fact: Prior to the Jim Crow era, these monuments were placed in cemeteries, not on Courthouse properties. Fact: Warren County Board of Supervisors has a responsibility to model leadership and stand on the right side of history, to assist our community in healing wounds created by our country, left by a legacy of slavery, disenfranchisement, people of color, and systemic racism. Fact: The majority opinion is not always the right thing to do. Warren County learned that lesson back during massive resistance. If the non-binding vote returns a majority in favor of the statue remaining, I expect the Board of Supervisors to educate themselves thoroughly on the issue with primary resources, to consult with historians and community members, act with empathy, and do what is right, not what is easy. Relocate the monument and work toward healing in our community. Chairman, I have here a link to the recording from our teach-in that happened on Sunday. I would like to give that to you, and you can pass it around.
Thank you, I will. Mrs. Shirocky, has anyone else signed up?
Paul Aldrich.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Paul Aldrich, 256 Orchard Street, Front Royal. I'm disturbed by the fact that we are spending so much time on this one subject. The subject was put on the ballot by you all for the citizens of the county and the town to vote on. The result of that should be very, very clear. Doesn't matter whether it goes for the removal or for keeping it where it's at. If the members of this community say in a vote that it should stay, then it should stay. If they say that it should be moved, it should be moved. But we have bigger problems than a statue in this town. We have drugs running rampant. We have people overdosing all the time. We have children being abused. We have people in this town needing food, shelter, medical care. Couldn't we devote our time better to solving the problems of our community than arguing and disputing a statue that's been there for 110 years? Just my point of view. I think we should work together to solve the problems that are plaguing this community today and not continue to argue over something because people are offended. Thank you all.[1210.83][1210.83][applause]
Mrs. Shirocky, has anyone else signed up?
Nancy Nguyen.
Nancy Nguyen, 146 Lookout Point Way, London, Virginia. I'm bringing to the attention again to the Board of Supervisors, all of you, Dolores, Tony, Walter, Cheryl, and Archie, that there was a name change recently made in regards to property owners of Shandau Farms, that they called them the Shandau Farms Property Owners Association. They aren't a property association. That's been determined by a court order. Subsequently, I found out that certain tax records were changed for POSF to the same name, Property Owners Association. I reached out to Walter. I gave you the information. Nothing happened, but I did reach out to Mrs. Sowers, and she fixed it. She said, "Yeah, there was a mistake made. We shouldn't have changed them because they're still deeded to Property Owners of Shandau Farms." I got suspicious, so I forwarded information from the Finance Department, and I found out that payments are being made to the same name as Shandau Farms Property Owners Association. That does not exist. That should concern Archie, Cheryl, Walter, Dolores, and Tony. So they would not tell me who they made the payments to, but who's cashing those checks? So that concerns me a great deal, and I have actually forwarded it to law enforcement because that is a big concern for me. Now, it's not just one incident. It's a series of events that concern me. It's just not changing the name. They've changed it on tax records, and they've changed it in your finance department. Pay attention because the wolf is at your door, and you can't just kick the can down the road and ignore me because, Walter, you've told me that we're grippers, but I'm a gripper with a cause. I'm here for the people of Shandau Farms in our sanitary district. Okay. So my next point, I have a lot to say, but I want to really go to the point of this. This is my FOIA request that I made to property owners of Shandau Farms who are in this room. I asked for a... First off, they are publicly funded. I think they're illegally publicly funded, but when you're publicly funded, you are obligated to the taxpayers to provide financial information. Okay. So Shandau Farms, I have an email from them that says everything but they're a private corporation because, see, they're a private nonprofit, and they are a recreational community. So I had to hire a lawyer because none of the Board of Supervisors, they're your contractor. It's not Walter's contractor. It's Archie's, Cheryl's, Walter's, and Dolores' and Tony's. That is your contractor. Whether you signed into their management agreement or not, that is your contractor. So I had to hire a lawyer, and I paid a lawyer to submit the request to Property Owners of Shandau Farms to get statements from them and some utilities, just for one year. It cost me $300. And you want to know what? It wasn't even complete because, oh, please, most statements come with checks. I didn't even get a complete FOIA. I'm going to deplore somebody on this Board of Supervisors to call property owners of Shandau Farms. Either you refund my money...
Nancy.
Yeah, fine. You know what? Kick the can down the road to a federal prison, Walter.
Mrs. Shirocky, has anyone else signed up?
Dale Orlowsky.
Mrs. Shirocky, has anyone else signed up?
My name is Dale Orlowsky, 146 Lookout Point Lane, London, Virginia. I got a few things to point here. My first one is back to Mr. Mabe. Your comment on the tape on the sanitary district training you guys had, calling your constituents, your voters, your citizens, a bunch of grippers, that was unprofessional, sir, and uncalled for. Next, I wrote you an email over a month ago. I'm still waiting for a reply back to that email on the violation of FOIA by POSF. I need that record. Are you going to do some bother or not? I need that for a record. I'd appreciate it if you answer me back. It's quite a norm. Next, I'm going to answer Mr. Berry. He had a question on common properties at POSF. If you go and read the court order I gave you, Matlock versus the owners of Shandau Farms, where they lost and they're no longer even supposed to be qualified or mentioned as a POA, it says right in there that those properties are not common properties. And I quote from the case, "Common area means properties within a development which is owned, leased, or required by the declaration of maintained or operated by a property owners association for the use of the members and designated as a common area for them." This is not. These are not common properties. These are properties deeded to POSF. Next, I'd like to point out you're in violation of that court order by funding these as common properties. You're in violation of the court order making it a sanitary district, sir. You went ahead and violated that order. It says specifically in that order that it is to be within Warren County and owning common properties within Warren County. For over 10, 20 years now, you've been funding properties in Clark County. You've been funding POSF who is located in Clark County. You're also violating a statute where it says that you have a conflict of interest. You have made POSF an advisory board. POSF is gaining money from the sanitary district. How can they be advisory board to a sanitary district and still get paid? That is a conflict of interest, and it's also against the sanitary district. If you look at the maintenance agreement, there's several references to the statute. If you go back and hit the references to the statute and look at the statute, they're specific for which you can spend that money on, and you're not spending it. And you said it's general. They're specifically saying water, sewage, roads, and common property. Again, we found out they're not common property. They're not a POA. So I advise you to go ahead and cease your funding. Go ahead and cease calling them a POA on your website. You go to the ones where it mentions locations and who to contact. You've got POSF listed as a HOA and POA, which they're not, sir.
Dale, your time is up.
I appreciate that, and I'm looking forward to the email for my record.
It is now 7:30. We need to go to our public hearing? Yes, sir.
Excuse me. We cannot start the public hearings before 7:30. We can start them after 7:30. So personally, and it's up to the board, I would just as well let the rest of the people finish the public presentation and get that portion over with because I think a lot of...[1684.33][1684.33][applause]
Okay. Does anyone else on the board have a problem with that? Anybody on the public hearing side that is paid, that's going to have to be compensated for their time if they wait? Okay? You okay? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Shirocky, do we have anyone else signed up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize. I'm unable to read your last name, but it is Steve and Jill. And you can each have three minutes. I apologize. I'm just not sure what your last names were.
Hey, doing good. Steve Greis in 904 Wendy Way, Front Royal, Virginia. I just wanted to start tonight saying thank you to all the local government, police, fire department, and our local citizens here in Front Royal, Warren County, for everything that they've been doing and standing strong through all these times in the COVID situation. As far as regards to the statue, one thing I'd like to point out is, as we erase our history, we are doomed to repeat it. So regardless of whether you stand right, left, black, white, north, south, it doesn't matter. Bottom line, it is a piece of history. It is knowledge. It is wisdom, and without it, we will lose it. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.[1791.65][1791.65][applause]
Mrs. Shirocky, has anyone else signed up?
Ms. Greis, did you have anything to add? Ms. Gray, did you have anything to add?
Good evening. My name is Julie Chicory. I live at 3797 Howsville Road in Front Royal. And I recognize that I am not in the majority tonight, and I'm proud of that. I'm also proud that I was not in the majority when I chose to be one of the 1% of Americans who served in the United States military, even a fewer percentage that were women, and even fewer who chose to remain in the military for 20 years. Now, I did want to talk about the Confederate statue and just a few things that kind of disturbed me because my military service took me away from home. And my home is Virginia, my family has been in Virginia, from before Virginia was even a state. So I have a very long history here, but it took me away. And at the conclusion of our military service, my husband and I came back here, and it was just this summer, and we were so disturbed to hear about the controversy of the Confederate monument. And what most concerned us was that it was a controversy. What baffled me when I watched the video from your August meeting was that that statue is not helping anyone learn history. And the reason why I say that is it's been there for over 100 years or so, and people still think that the Confederacy wasn't about slavery. So obviously, that statue does not teach history. Moving the statue will not erase history, it still happened. And acknowledging that and acknowledging what happened does not have to dishonor our ancestors. And I say "our" because they're my ancestors too. I don't want to dishonor them, but I don't honor them with a lie. And that's why it's important to recognize history and to recognize that times were different then and people had different values and different education and different experience. I'm not judging them, but I'm saying now, in the 21st century, we need to recognize what happened and the effect that it had, not only on the 600 men who may not have owned slaves, probably didn't, who may not have even chosen to go to war, may have been conscripted. That could all very well be true, but there were also, according to census and slave records, 1,500 slaves in Warren County. And those people aren't recognized anywhere. And as the county went on to improve itself and finally get to the point where it could fund a monument and get to the point where it could grow, someone said like in the 50s it really recovered. At that time, black Americans in Warren County were not able to vote because of black codes. They were not able to go to the same schools, they were not able to drink from the same water fountain. And the last thing I'd just like to say as a member of the United States military, retired, my husband, my father, my brother, and my son, all veterans, is that we're proud to be in Warren County in the United States of America, not the Confederate states, the United States. And the statue does not belong on United States property.
Thank you. Mrs. Shirocki, do we have anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Chris North.
Oh, this handsome devil.
Sir, please keep your comments to yourself.
Hi, my name is Chris North, 985 Apple Orchard Drive. Good evening, Board of Supervisors. I'm the other side of the argument for taking it down. I keep hearing tales about petitions and overwhelming support from the community. You know, I had a paper petition shortly before you all decided to do the referendum, I did a paper petition where I actually went out and talked to Warren County citizens. I didn't have an online petition where anybody could sign it from anywhere in the country. I went out and spoke with Warren County citizens, white, black, every race, creed, and color, they signed my petition. That's overwhelming support from this community. Almost 2,000 signatures, I gathered, in three weeks. Three weeks is what I got those almost 2,000 signatures in. I stopped once you all announced the referendum because, you know, let's face it, the petition does me no good anymore, it's up to the people in Warren County, and I leave that in their hands. I don't need to come here and complain to you all every week to try to get you to do something. You know, it's up to the people here. Let's see here, I kind of wrote this last minute, I apologize if I'm stuttering. One person stated that we can't wait for the majority. Why? Is that not how democracy works? Are we not a democracy? Are we just going to throw that all out for the voices of a handful of people compared to the will of the rest of this county? We all pay taxes here, we all live here. A lot of us appreciate that monument. To say that we can't wait for the will of the majority is an insult to the people of this county. I can't believe we're even entertaining somebody that would throw something like that out You know, the people in that monument, regardless of what happened there, those people were sons of this county. We're all sons of this county and daughters of this county. And I encourage you to please don't put them in a corner, don't hide those people. You know, it took a lot to go do what those people did. Somebody said you can't learn history. Well, if you look at the battles on there and you look at the mortality rates, that some of those people marched into at 70 and 80% mortality rates, those were brave people that came from this county, and I am very proud that I have family on that monument. And I take it very seriously. You know, it's not, I apologize. You know, we're told reasons that it was put up, white supremacy to keep people down. You all were given a pamphlet at one of the earlier meetings on this, I know you can't respond to any of this, but tell me where you saw anything about white supremacy in that pamphlet. I guarantee you, you didn't read it because I read it, and I know it's not in there. I know exactly why it was put up. Those monuments were said to have been put up during the Jim Crow era, they were, they were put up on the 50, 75, and 100 year anniversaries and on anniversaries of battles, which just so happened to be during the Jim Crow era. You know, that ran from 1870 to the 1950s. Did we blame the Spanish FOIA on Jim Crow as well because it took place during those exact times? You see how ridiculous that argument sounds? Any other argument for why it was erected is a fallacy, it's an opinion. You know, those people can't fight for themselves anymore, and it's not hard to kick the dirt in the face of the dead. I encourage you all to fight for those that can't fight for themselves anymore. And just remember that my ass is kick deadlines. Thank you, Mr. Carter, for letting us all speak, I appreciate it.
Mrs. Shirocki, has anyone else signed up?
Chris Smoot.
Is Chris still here? Next person on your list?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Sam Hahn, I live at 103 North Fork Lane. Basically, I'm just here to, well, I'm going to say it like this, what you're seeing happening now is the result of these individuals staying at home. They were allowing things to work themselves out. The problem is, is that the minority who seems to be shouting the loudest seems to overpower those that sit at home. So that's why you're seeing what you're seeing now. And I got news for you, it's only going to get worse. The reason I say that is because I hate calling out organizations, but Front Royal Unites is also planning to November 4th to come in here after the vote and to throw a fit because it might not go in their way. That to me does not make sense at all. So, I know what you guys are going through sitting up there. There's a lot of hard decisions to be made, and I want everybody in this room and everybody that watches this video to think about how you guys are being put on the spot because you are. And I'd like to thank the Board and local law enforcement for how they've been handling some of the situations we've had in this county over the past couple months because it's been ridiculous. Other than that, you guys have a good night.
Mrs. Shirocki, has anyone else signed up?
A.J. Lockhart.
Yeah, that's me. Everything I had to say has already been said, and I don't want to waste anybody's time.
Appreciate that very much. Mrs. Shirocki?
Hello, Samuel Porter, 216 Fletcher Street, good old Front Royal, Virginia. So sometimes listening to the comments from others really shows me that Front Royal Unites being here and in existence is exactly where we need to be. So, I'm super thankful for this, our continued, just our continued existence. Front Royal Unites is a nonprofit dedicated to eradicating white supremacy and is an organization made up of over 2,000 residents, so that's that. I have a quick story I'd like to tell you all. There was a little old couple who walked into a fast food restaurant. The little old man walked up to the counter, he ordered the food, paid, and took the tray back to the table where the little old lady sat. On the tray was a hamburger, a small bag of fries, and a drink. Carefully, the old man cut the hamburger in two and divided the fries into two neat piles. He sipped the drink and passed it to the old lady, who took a sip and passed it back. A young man on a nearby table had watched the old couple and felt sorry for them. He offered to buy them another meal, but the old man politely declined, saying that they were used to sharing everything. The old man began to eat his food, but his wife sat still, not eating. The young man continued to watch the couple, he still felt like he should be offering help. And as the little, as the little old man finished eating, the old lady had still not started her food. So the young boy said, "Ma'am, why aren't you eating?" And the young man sympathetically said, that's what the young man sympathetically asked the lady, "Why aren't you eating?" And the old lady looked up and said politely, "I'm waiting for the teeth." So, I just brought that up because it talks about the dangers of making assumptions. It talks about making sure you understand before you intervene. Clearly, what Front Royal Unites is here to do is necessary. People do not have the real history understood. We did have a teaching, and I honestly am upset that none of y'all showed up. It wasn't just the Front Royal Unites, Sam Porter, the individual thing, we had the Dean of Humanities from Lord Fairfax come. I think it was just a little disrespectful for no leadership to be there. So I'm not interested in arguing or making individual attacks like you've heard in the background about me, the individual, or Front Royal Unites, the organization. I'm interested in the history and understanding it. I don't have time to argue and be mean to others. That's not what Front Royal Unites is about, peace, love, and unity, and that's a hill I'm willing to die on. Thank you.
Mrs. Shirocki, has anyone else signed up?
Don Broadway, 57 Pepper Court, London, Virginia. Good evening, Board, Chairman, and the Board. Thank you for opening up this session for public comment. I'd first like to commend you all and thank you for making it a portion of the ballot that we're going to be able to vote on this coming November 3rd. I think that was an excellent way to approach this contentious situation, and I don't know how it's going to turn out, but I think that was a real smart way to approach finding out how the public feels about this issue. I rise this evening in support of lighting the statue on our courthouse lawn, remain there. I think it's a piece of our history, I believe that it brings actually unity and brings commerce to our fair town. What's going to be next if we remove that? The rest of the Civil War, Civil War Trail, placards that are on our highways and byways? I just think it's the wrong decision to try and erase history. I think it's there for a good purpose, and I think it's good for our community, and I don't see it as a divisive thing. I'm not offended by it, and I think it's an asset to our community. So I just wanted to rise in support of maintaining the presence of it there and in perpetuity. Thank you for your time.
Mrs. Shirocki, has anyone else signed up?
My name is Jeremiah Lucas, 5867 Stralsburg Road, Stralsburg. And I'd like to know, who could honestly say they wake up in the morning and they think that a statue bothers them that much that they need to remove it? Piece of history. We've lost so much history over millennia. And you look back at Egypt, they've lost all their statues, people, there's mysteries there. And, you know, somebody just got an idea in their head because they were watching TV one day, the news, and cancel culture said, "Let's get rid of these statues, these monuments. They stand for this, they stand for that." They want to divide everybody. You know, all the left Democrats, they want to divide all the American people, giving them something to fight about, and keep everyone divided instead of coming together, making the world better. And that's all this is. And Front Royal Unites, it seems like that's all they're doing. Obviously, they've got a problem with a white woman that was in their group. I mean, that seems like racist to me, I thought they were fighting racism. Something to think about, need to turn off the TV and worry about some real problems.
Mrs. Shirocki, anyone else signed up?
Mike Mayer.
Oh, yeah. First and foremost, I wanted to state my opinion that the young lady in charge of the speaker's list has a tremendous last name, Shirocki. It sounds great and is a lot of fun to say out loud. I salute.
Can I have your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, hell, I was so excited about your name, I got... My name is Mike Mayer, 108 Pebble Lane, Front Royal, Virginia. Helltown, baby. Back to what I was saying about your great last name, sounds great, it's a lot of fun to say out loud. I salute you and all those who carry that awesome name, and also salute to Tony Carter for letting the people speak tonight. That being stated, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, children of all ages. It is such an honor and privilege to be given the opportunity this evening to approach the podium and address the Board of Supervisors and the fine people of Warren County. Give them a good side, young man. I'm here tonight as a man of the people, not the obnoxiously vocal, ill-informed, emotionally inept, and asinine minority, some of whom may or may not be welcome at the local tropical smoothie nowadays, but of the fine people who make up the vast majority of this county's population, who wish to tell y'all there on the elevated platform this evening that it's high time to reel it in as far as humor in that minority goes. A few days ago, Warren County devoted precious resources to an event put on by that minority, losing steam in their ridiculously non-reality-based movement, celebrating the birthday, excuse me, celebrating the birthday of a career criminal who died as a result of a fentanyl and methamphetamine overdose while resisting arrest. On behalf of the vast majority, I ask you, when do we pump the brakes on humoring that movement and seek out a bit better use of our county's resources? With that, I yield my time and leave you in saying God bless America, and all of y'all crying about the damn statue, don't you worry, hold tight, you'll be told what to be outraged about sooner than later. Have a good night, y'all.
Mrs. Shirocki, has anyone else signed up?
That's going to be a tough speaker to follow. My name is Ralph Rinaldi, I live at 4725 Howsville Road, Front Royal, Virginia. I'm here as the chairman of POSF. In regards to the work session concerning sanitary districts, it is apparent there is some confusion on the operation of Shenandoah Farms. I'm not here to discuss the confusion, but rather offer an information-type presentation by POSF. Just set a time and a date for this presentation, and POSF will be there. We want to work with you as we have in the past.
Ralph, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt, but have you, have you looked at your email?
No, not yet.
We have already done that, we did that today.
Okay, well, then I'll finish. Just set a time... Just set a time and date for the presentation, and POSF will be there. We want to work with all of you as we have in the past in partnership for the success, the continued success of Shenandoah Farms. Thank you very much. Got in late and didn't check my email, Ralph.
No worries. I understand.
Thank you.
Mrs. Shirocki, has anyone else signed up?
I believe it's Rick Karikoff. And I'm sorry if I mispronounced your last name.
Well, that's what I would say that's already been said. I won't take the time or the floor or anything else.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Cascata. I'm at 79 Magnolia Drive. So I just want to make the point that as we look around here, all the people speaking for the statue are white, and...
Oh!
I'm white and not insulting you. Just give me a second. As white people, we have not experienced the oppression that black people have experienced. We cannot experience it. We do not know what that feels like. White privilege is a real thing. It does not mean that you haven't struggled, that you haven't suffered, because yes, all of us have struggled and suffered. It means that when compared to a black person in the same situation, you have a leg up over them because of the institutions upon which this country was founded, because of the way we've structured our society to automatically disenfranchise and hurt black and other people of color. Because you all weren't at our meeting this past weekend, you didn't hear the story of Sue Ada Freeman. She was a woman who could not even go to school because our county would have rather shut down the school than allow her in because of the color of her skin. And this is only 50, 60, 70 years ago that this stuff was happening.
Sir, please keep your words to yourself.
This stuff still goes on today. We have barely passed a generation from when she was locked out of school. She continued to spend her entire career commuting to Northern Virginia because she couldn't get a fair job here. So that's what it means when black people say that they're oppressed, when they don't have the same opportunities that we all have as we're white. And it is our job to make the playing field more equal for them and open opportunities to them. And the fact that they're walking and seeing this statue every single day, reminding them that not too long ago they were property they themselves, is unacceptable. None of these people are going to be hurt by the statue being relocated to another spot where they can continue to honor these veterans, not on our House of Justice. I would also like to close with a quote from Gary Kushner, so you all can see the real motivations that are hiding behind these words. You should be thankful for your, that your ancestors were slaves.
Just a second. Let her finish.
After all the wars, and I call them that.
And that is correct.
There was a statement made by a person who has spoken today, saying that you should be thankful your ancestors were slaves because they paved the way for your freedom. Otherwise, you'd be living in a grass mud hut in some blank country. You live in the freest country on the planet now. How about appreciating that, you ingrate? These kinds of sentiments are hiding behind this notion of an idyllic heritage that does not exist.
Mrs. Shirocki, has anyone else signed up?
Mr. Chairman, there's no one else signed up.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? A reminder, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Tim Radigan. I live at 6079 Stonewall Jackson Highway. Although I have told you before, I look at the real possibility of people going after that particular name, to change that highway's name. I promised myself that I would never use my skin color or my race to make a point. The other side talks about oppression, talks about a race being enslaved and oppressed or oppressed. I'm an Irish Catholic. Most of you know Irish history. The Irish race has been oppressed, both in their own home country and in the United States. I remember my grandfather telling me a story about his great-grandfather. They were walking down a street in a poorer section of New York. On one side of the street, there was a white businessman who had in his sign or in his window, "No Irish need apply." A little bit further down the road, in a predominantly African-American community, there is a sign in that window that said, "No Irish need apply." We are all equally, or our ancestors are all equally responsible for enslaving and impressing other people. The Irish did it when they kidnapped St. Patrick, okay? Meaning that my race was at fault as well. I bet if you look throughout history, and we all know the African Muslims were responsible for catching the slaves or catching the Africans and turning around and selling them right to the slave traders. We are all responsible. All of us, or should I say, all of our ancestors. There was a very interesting quote from Star Trek, and I'll say it real fast so I will get it out. "You shall not be held responsible for the sins of your fathers or your ancestors." And I'll say this, this is another quote from a very famous actor who once, who died of cancer. I know we're not allowed to say names, so I won't say his names. Based off of a very famous movie called Dirty Dancer, he said, "Nobody puts baby in the corner." I say, "Nobody puts our memorial in a corner." Thank you.
Please, please keep it down.
Hello, Warren County Board of Supervisors, and thanks for allowing me to speak.
Your name and address, please, sir?
My name is Randy Gardner, 151 Solitude Lane, Gore, Virginia. My family name is Simpson and Whitelaw. Okay? The Simpsons take up a whole wall in your Confederate museum right here in your town. Our family donated their weapons, their uniforms, their letters to their family, which would be nice if some other people would read those letters and understand how these men felt when they lost their five sons. They're buried here up on the hill as well. Their monuments are up on the hill as well. Both sides of this whole thing have racist people. Both sides, okay? It's a given. But what happened 100 years ago doesn't make me who I am, doesn't make anyone else who they are. Need to move on. You need to put your big boy pants on and vote and leave your Confederate monuments where they are. Drive up to Antietam. Is that the next place that, you know, BLM's going to go to and say, "Take the monuments down"? You're going to take down the Union monuments, too? You're going down a path that you have no idea of the consequences. And the people that are out here burning stuff, looting, causing the evil, the corruption, they have no idea of the consequences that will face them in the future. And it's the honest truth, and I'm here to preach it to you guys. I've preached it to other people, other Boards of Supervisors. Orange County has a statue almost identical to your statue. They're fighting to take that down now. My grandfather's, great-grandfather's name is on that statue. I know what people did back in the days and back in the time. It wasn't right. It wasn't fair to every race. But this is 2020. It's got nothing to do with us now. Nothing. The groups that say they're for a race are the most racist group out there right now today, right here, right now. You can say that. It's not the good people in your town and in your counties. We're good people. We obey the law. I've never been in jail. I don't ever want to spend a day in jail. I probably wouldn't make it in jail. But I'm saying that we live our lives like our grandparents and our parents taught us, straight and narrow. You show the respect to other people that you are given. And, you know, a lot of us guys in here, men and women, we can say we have best friends of color from other countries, other races, other cultures. They're my best friends. And need to wake up and smell the roses we live in today, not the past.
Is there anyone else in the audience?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that's the end of our 60-minute time limit.
Thank you, Tony.
You're welcome. May I make another suggestion, please, too? Can we take five minutes so all the good people that are out here can leave peacefully? Because we've got to stay here. You don't.
We love you, Tony Carter!
I appreciate it. A five-minute break, please.